Saying, I think, a lot of my concerns are, were already articulated much better by him. But, yeah, I just wanted to reiterate again, when they talked about the training that the trainers had in Chicago, a week-long training, I believe it was only three or four days, actually, I looked it up, and only one of those days was unimplicit bias. And that's just not enough. I mean, I've been, you know, educating myself for, you know, over a year, and it's, and I'm still trying to unlearn my biases. So, that's just not long enough. So, I hope we can get more training on that. How long is the officer training? Is it gonna be ongoing? And he did mention that it will be ongoing, but what does that mean? Is that, is that one hour per year? You know, and I hope that it's a lot more than that, because, again, it's, it takes us a significant amount of reading and learning and absorbing to actually have it sink in. In the reconciliation process, there's community members that will be involved with that. How are they chosen? Is it, I mean, is it part of the old guard, or is it the youth that are out there demanding much more radical things of our police department than some of the more established members of the community? So, again, how is, how are those community members chosen? The community bias, our bias training for the community was brought up briefly, and, and I, I just want to say, I mean, who's gonna show up for that? You know, because that's part of the problem, is like, everybody's got blinders, it doesn't affect them, so it doesn't exist. They're not gonna come take this training. So, I, you know, I unfortunately don't have a solution, but I just want to make, make you aware that, you know, it might make us feel good to say, we've got this, you know, implicit bias training available to all the community, and it might make us feel good, like it's gonna do something, but in actuality, probably not. The surveys, the ongoing surveys that the police will take, and from the community, will undoubtedly show that there's bias. I mean, that's not news. That's not news to anybody who's paying attention. And so, what are we gonna do? You know, what, is there, does the initiative, you know, calls for policy change, but is there any authority, like, in particular, the Federation? Like, can the initiative give any sort of policy change that's actually going to be implemented by the Federation? Because they are like a monolith right now, that it's like untouchable, which is something that we should address. So, that's really all I had to say. I wanted to say one last thing that is not in abstract related to this, which is that, you know, I live in North, and, and there's a lot of people in North that are so quick to call 911 on people smoking pot in their car, or like hanging around the stoop. And like, I, like, where is the crime? Do you know what I'm saying? I mean, I understand, on the books, yes, they are breaking laws, maybe. Maybe there's more than three people on a sidewalk, which I think is illegal, which is ridiculous. But like, like, what is, why are we calling 911? Why are we so concerned about our neighbors smoking pot, or, or, or what, like, so, or, or people dealing, dealing, or, or, or doing crack? I mean, crack, cocaine, is a symptom of an unenriched environment. It's been, if you've been following now, it's not about the substance. It's not an addictive substance. It has to do with the environment that one is in. If people have an enriched environment, they're gonna drop that. So, if you really, really care about crime in our communities, we'd be looking at the symptoms, and not just like looking to lock up every criminal and every drug user that's out there. So, just, yeah, to, just to please rethink crime, rethink what it means to, to provide safety, because safety for who? You know, it's clearly not safe for a lot of the people in our city, and especially the folks in North Minneapolis where I live. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you wouldn't mind signing up by the clerk if you didn't get a chance to. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, council members, I'm Andrea Brown. I'm the Chair of the Police Conduct Oversight Commission. A lot of you may not know what our body actually does. Our body was chartered under Title IX, that we help assure that police services are delivered in a lawful and non-discriminatory manner by providing the public with meaningful participatory oversight of police policy and procedure. For those of you that are, have been to our meetings and are aware of what we have done, I believe that we have demonstrated our ability to be a mechanism for Minneapolis. And that's why I have, I'm here to appeal to you, to ensure that the national initiative includes the Police Conduct Oversight Commission in their study, and in the three years. They have been here in June and November, and not once have they reached out to myself to meet with me. In fact, I traveled to California at the National Association for Civil, Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement, otherwise known as NACOL, and met face-to-face with Ms. Kisi, gave her my contact information, and said, I look forward to meeting you in November. November came and went, and I was given an invitation to meet as a part of a large group, but never individually, with the Police Conduct Oversight Commission. It's imperative that they meet with us, because from the charter, from the authority that you all gave us, we are in the police policy manual all day, every day. This is what we look at, this is what, we're taking complaints, and we're looking at the complaints, and seeing what the citizens are, are up here telling you, and we're making policy recommendations. Our investigatory staff was approved, and by the, by the MPD, and by Chief Harto, and all the deputy chiefs, and that is being implemented as we speak into that. So, the, the Police Conduct Oversight Commission is a vital organ that Minneapolis does have, that they need to utilize. And I just encourage you, and I'm asking you, to ensure that the Police Conduct Oversight Commission is a vital part of the national initiative. Because when they leave in three years, we will still be here. We will still be outreach-ing to the community, we will still be having our listening sessions with the community, and we will still be here, looking at the policies to help make sure that Minneapolis is continuing moving forward. And so, once the national initiative leaves, we're still here. We need to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We get somewhere, folks?
Good morning. My name is Sherry Seaford. I live at 4313 40th Avenue South. I'm a slightly nervous, middle-class, 50-year-old white lady. And, you know, a couple of months ago, maybe a year ago, I probably would have been pretty excited about Minneapolis looking at implicit bias. And, and I'm, and I am, I'm happy that that's happening, but I'm really concerned that it's not enough. I know I'm not the only person that was horrified by seeing videos of white supremacists coming to plan shoot, to shoot people, to shoot protesters at the 4th Precinct. I'm not the only one that was horrified to see a 2006 FBI report about white supremacists infiltrating police departments. So, while looking at implicit bias is great, what about the explicit bias? Are we looking at that? Are we looking at the degree to which the Minneapolis Police Department has been infiltrated by white supremacists? That's what I'm worried about.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Dave Picking, 4200 Cedar Avenue South in Minneapolis. I like to see that there is more attention being paid to the Minneapolis Police Department, and I certainly want this initiative to be as effective as possible. I appreciate that I had a chance to meet with Dr. Kisi last month, and that allayed a few concerns. I still fear, fear that this is coming at the problem backwards. It's right in the name, National Institute, or National Initiative for Trust and Justice. Justice has to come first. I feel that there, I fear that the real solutions will continue to be stalled while there is further study and further study. We in CUAPB, Community United Against Police Brutality, have been studying the MPD for many years, and that has informed the solutions that we have proposed. By contrast, the national initiative brought 11 people into Minneapolis in June, and after a day with the mayor, the chief, and a few carefully-selected community members, it became clear at their evening meeting that none of them had even heard of the five-year federal mediation. They've got a lot of catching up to do. But that history of that mediation is one of the reasons that people don't trust another federal initiative. I have passed out to you our study of the statistics on discipline at the OPCR, since it replaced the Civilian Review Authority. The lack of discipline is a major part of the problem of continuing police brutality. The OPCR, the Office of Police Conduct Review, is a total failure, at least in relation to its important function of receiving complaints from the public and using these to determine sufficient discipline to actually correct and deter misconduct. After one year of the OPCR, the Star Tribune had a front-page banner headline, "437 Complaints, Zero Discipline." You did a one-year review and decided to wait and see. So, when the second year rolled around, there was no review, and one reason was that the Department of Justice was conducting a major study of the OPCR, as well as certain other aspects of the police department. That study finally came out last January, and it was a ridiculous 35-page PowerPoint. There were a few pages of data, followed by conclusions that were drawn, not from that data, but from the feedback from stakeholders, all of them apparently selected from the secretive chief's community advisory council, and handpicked by the chief. It was a picture of dramatic success, and I think it seems to be the information that the national initiative relies on, and understandably so. They're part of the federal government also. But we believe that this is part of the reason that the actual performance continues of the OPCR, continues to be ignored by the city council. Please do not put off this major problem while working on another three-year initiative. I have passed out the Communities United Against Police Brutality's demands relating from the Jamar Clark shooting. We have tried to make clear those areas where the city council has the power and the responsibility to meet those demands. The last four are not specific to Jamar Clark, but are ways to prevent future misconduct by the police, even up to the point of murder. I think that there are more important and urgent things that need to be done than what's being pointed out by the national initiative. As the last speaker said so well, implicit bias is important, but we have a department with serious, very explicit racial bias in attitudes and actions. And reconciliation, that can only begin after there is a major change in conduct. While the police department continues to act as it has for the last decades, there can be no reconciliation when that, when that remains. So, trust and justice, I fear that the national initiative has it backwards. And please act now on the information that you have already. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Others? Yes, sir. Go ahead. And then, if you want to come forward, I'll make sure you're next.
Thanks. My name is Mike Spengenberg, and I live in Fulton. I, I appreciated the chance to, to hear about this, this program this morning. I, I think there are, there's a lot of good stuff on paper here, that I think has some potential. I think what this will come down to, in my mind, is the extent to which white people are willing to hold other white people accountable for our role in perpetuating systems of white supremacy. I, like Councilmember Gordon, I've, I spent over a decade in education, and have spent much of that time unlearning a lot of the miseducation that I received as a white person growing up in the Twin Cities. And I also know that a couple of days of training could not have done that for me. It took decades of, of work, and, and learning, and, and listening. And, and so, this will only be a start. And, and, and what I know from my time as an educator is that white people who have decided that this is not a problem for them, you're not gonna undo that in two days. You may not be able to undo it at all. And so, to what extent are we actually gonna set a bar for cultural competence for our white police officers? This is on us as white people to do this. And so, I'm specifically looking at white members of the council, at the white mayor, at, at myself. This is on us. To what extent will we hold our fellow white people accountable for this? I imagine there are any number of procedural things, transactional things, that an officer is required to do to be able to, to remain an officer. But I also know that you can harbor racially hostile views towards the communities you serve, year after year after year, and remain on the police force. That is unacceptable. It is unacceptable for the president of our police union to respond to protests against the state-sanctioned violence against black people with the culturally incompetent cry of, "What about black-on-black crime?" That is unacceptable. It is unacceptable for an officer at the 4th Precinct to be videotaped saying, "If people knew what really happened in this neighborhood, no one would live here," and then attribute that to race. That is unacceptable. If you hold that level of racial animus toward the people you serve, you have no business being anywhere near a community of color with a badge and a gun. None. A couple of days of training is a process. I want to focus on the outputs. What will the results of this be? Because you can drag anybody, honestly, they're gonna get paid for this training. You can drag anybody in, set out the bagels and coffee, and have them sit through a training. The results that Councilmember Gordon talked about in the assessment, that's what matters. There has to be a bar for cultural competence among police officers, specifically white police officers. And as white people, it is our job to stand up and demand that we will no longer tolerate a system that oppresses our fellow citizens of color for our own benefit. I know that contract talks are currently going on with the Minneapolis Police Federation and with the city. That is a place where we can specifically put into language a bar and requirements for cultural competence. Don't say you have to attend training. Talk about the actual output, the actual characteristics, the actual competence that will be required of officers. You may not work on this force, if this is true of you. You may not. That contract is a place where we can put this into, put some actual teeth into this, and not just have speakers here, and not just have blog posts, and not just have competing back-and-forths with, with police union presidents and columnists in the newspaper. This is on white people like me, and I call on my fellow white people to stand up and demand an end to racially hostile policing practices in our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Yes, sir.
My name is Michael Pau. This is my first time ever being to a meeting like this. I'm not here with no one but myself. I woke up, I saw it on the news, that the police was trying to build trust with the community. I'm a native of North Minneapolis, born and raised. Growing up, I had a lot of situations where I was traumatized by the police, not because I did anything wrong, just because I may, excuse me, I'm kind of nervous here. Basically, I was traumatized, and I always felt like something was wrong with me, until I grew up and matured and understood that it wasn't always me. It was people that didn't understand me, and people who looked like me, from a community where they didn't, you know, get training on how to deal with people that was disenfranchised and don't really have anything. In North Minneapolis, we only had one grocery store. We had five, six liquor stores, and a abundance of other things. There's parents that don't have jobs. There's kids that's running around, because parents are at work. And, uh, parents want to be involved in the kid's life, but if they get involved, they gonna miss out time from work, which is gonna probably make them homeless. So, we have a financial situation going on in North Minneapolis, that if people would just had the opportunity to have, opportunity to live and have choices, be there for their kids, ask productive parents, and not always feel victimized when they are disciplining their kids, and other things that'll keep them from having to deal with the pressure of someone else over-disciplining their kids. I believe that if the community has support with the police, you know, like those people were saying, "I support y'all big time. It's all black people accountable for things that ain't right, because we need a healing, period, here in Minnesota," just on the fact that I don't feel invited or welcome. I'm not a criminal, but I always feel like, when, when I'm going somewhere where I'm the minority, I don't like the feeling. So, I overcompensate it by being over-nice. And, uh, being over-nice sometimes have people looking at me like I'm weird. But it's how I decided to deal with life, and not take everything and be agitated, aggressive, and feeling like, you know, this is just how life is. I choose to be a walking example. I walk, I worked in a high school with alternative, at-risk students for eight years, and I understood that a lot of those students were making bad decisions because they were hungry, and didn't have any money. Their parents were distracted, whether it was through work, or through just trying to figure out how to get a job, or any other thing. So, I decided to just show them that they can grow to beyond, they can grow to be beyond what people think of them now, like I did when I was younger by myself. I counted myself out at 24 years old, and here I am standing at 38. And, and every day I wake up, was the day I told myself that I wouldn't have been able to enjoy this good part of life if I'd have believed what people were telling me when I was younger. So, what I did was I started showing the kids that, hey, you know, wake up and inspire to do something with today, so tomorrow can be better. And if you don't do something with today, don't expect tomorrow to be better. By me being a native of North Minneapolis, I focused on staying positive, becoming an entrepreneur, trying to open my own hobby shop, help employ kids, as well as do something for the community by cleaning cars, and as well as making the community look better, one clean car at a time. So, all I'm saying is, I'm just standing here as a concern, North Minneapolis, black man, with some of my issues about why that Minneapolis is going through some of the things it's going through. All of us is not from Chicago. A lot of us is born and raised there, and we do know how to deal with North Minneapolis. So, reach to some of the people from North Minneapolis before you go to Chicago, and, uh, see what we can do. Thought I'd say thank you for this meeting today.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, council members, my name is Angela Conley. I'm a resident of South Minneapolis. And I would just like to mention a few things. When we talk about incorporating community input into policing practices in Minneapolis, I heard mention community leaders, and I'd like to know who those leaders are. It is my belief that the community leaders are actually residents in the community, and not anyone who you might deem as a leader of community. So, we're talking about regular residents, like myself, or anyone else who live in the community, not anyone appointed. Oftentimes, we think of community leaders as those people who might be reverends, or people who might, you might know as have led initiatives in the community previously, but this isn't always the case. Sometimes those community leaders do not hold the best interests of the community at hand, just as some of our members in leadership don't always hold the interests of their constituents in mind. When we talk about national initiatives, those initiatives, we have to remember, were built on the backs of unarmed people of color who were shot and killed in this country. We are at a pivotal point right now, where we can make some key decisions, and have some key dialogues, on how we can lead the effort to reform, not necessarily transform, but reform, the way in which we practice policing in Minneapolis specifically. And again, to go back to the community, a lot of the community members in North Minneapolis right now feel that the barricades around the 4th Precinct are unnecessary. They feel as though they cannot, they're not allowed there, they cannot enter, and that they should be removed immediately. I personally feel that the immediate removal of the barricades around the 4th Precinct is of utmost importance to the community that live, the people that live within that community. We also talked about trust from the community, and the effort to hire more black officers for the Minneapolis Police Department, and how difficult that might be. However, a lot of the people that live within the hardest-hit communities in Minneapolis don't necessarily feel that it's the color of the officers, but the culture of the department as a whole, and how that change within that culture needs to be made, not just necessarily putting more people of color within uniforms. So, I want to conclude by just keeping in mind that the community leaders that you think could be best representative for us are not necessarily those that may have had press conferences with you, but those that are scared to come out of their homes, those that, like, for example, the brother that just spoke, people that are living, people that are working, people that are parenting, perhaps there could be an initiative to go around neighborhoods out of uniform, to pass out information on upcoming meetings, and a way in which people can have their voice heard, because I don't see a lot of the members of our community who actually live on these blocks sitting right here today, because perhaps they did not know about it. So, a bigger opportunity to reach out to the community is necessary and needed, so that their voices really are heard, and that all these initiatives that we're planning, and that have been going on for a while now, continue to do so with the voice of those hardest-hit by practices within the Minneapolis Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Nakima Levy-Pounds. I'm the president of the Minneapolis NAACP and a law professor at the University of St. Thomas. I want to say that we support the national, the national initiative. We've met with Dr. Tracy Cassie and Mark Keppelhoff, and we've indicated a willingness to help, however, is necessary for this work to not only get started, but to be successful and effective. Members of the NAACP wholeheartedly support this effort as well. One of the things, though, that needs to be addressed are some of the immediate concerns surrounding the conduct of the Minneapolis Police Department. It really saddens me that a few days after Dr. Tracy Cassie left Minnesota is when Jamar Clark was killed by police. And since that time, we've continued to take in reports from people who fear for their safety in Minneapolis, who have experienced excessive force at the hands of the police. In fact, one night during the occupation, we held a candlelight vigil, and a woman stood behind me who had a puffy, black eye, and I had an older African-American woman, and I asked her what happened to her, and she said, "The police did this to me." We've also taken in reports from children who are being continually harassed by the Minneapolis Police Department. We've known for a long time that this department is out of control, that there has not been adequate discipline, that we continue to settle excessive force lawsuits, which only exacerbate the problem. So, if we are serious about gaining community trust, so that this initiative can be successful, there are steps that need to be taken now to rein in the police department, and to send a message that this body will no longer tolerate abuse at the hands of the Minneapolis Police Department, and that officers will be held accountable for harassing, abusing, and criminalizing people, particularly on the north side of Minneapolis. It is appalling to know that people have felt as though the 4th Precinct is like an occupying army in that community. And in fact, after the occupation was torn down by the Minneapolis Police Department, what did we see go up? Fences and barricades, which reinforce this occupying-like situation that we have amongst the Minneapolis Police Department. It's completely unacceptable. It's inaccessible to residents, elderly people trying to walk through the neighborhood. If we thought that the occupation was a nuisance, then we need to think again when we're looking at what's been created. It is an abomination and a monstrosity. And I loathe to think of how many of our tax dollars went to support the fencing and barricades in a city that has double-digit unemployment for African-Americans. Why weren't those resources spent to create jobs for the poorest of the poor, and to address the chronic issue of homelessness amongst youth and African-American adults in the city of Minneapolis? So, we have our priorities mixed up, and it's time for a paradigm shift in the city. We want to work with the city. We want to trust the city, but we cannot tolerate business as usual. And we hope that, as people of good conscience, you will agree and make some immediate changes that will reinforce the long-term changes that the national initiative will be proposing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make some comment? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone. This was not an official public hearing, so I don't need to do any of that opening and closing. One thing, before I receive and file, there were a lot of comments from the speakers asking questions about how a broader range of community members can be connected with the national initiative, and so I wondered if either the chief or deputy chief wanted to say anything about that, or how the national initiative can be reached, or how can we help spread the word so that more community members can be connected with the national initiative and, and have their thoughts heard?
Madam Chair and Council, we're constantly striving for ways to be able to identify those folks. That's what, some of our greatest challenges is how to do that, so we're certainly looking to the national initiative, and Mark can probably comment, where did he, oh, sorry that you're standing next to me. Comment on some of the best practices and ways we can do that.
Right, Madam Chair. Sure, I can address that. And of all the community members that have come forward today, we would have, you can talk to me afterwards, after the committee meeting, and also all of you, if there are constituents of yours that are interested in meeting with us. Future meetings are gonna be onsite in January, so we're, this is an ongoing dialogue with the community. We will continue to meet with groups, any and all groups, any and all members. That's the whole, a large part of this process, is to meet with community members, to hear their voice in this process. So, the door is open, and we are welcoming to anyone who would like to speak with us.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Gordon?
we heard from the PCOC chair, and I think that's a great resource. And I'm, I suspect, I'm hopeful that it was already planned to interface with that more directly, but I just wanted to voice support from up here for that.
Absolutely, Councilmember Gordon. We absolutely, we have met with one of the members and we've invited them, but we will continue to dialogue with them as well.
Okay. And I might just say, another suggestion that I have heard, and so I think maybe we need to talk a little bit more about how, again, we can help spread the word to make sure community members who wish to be connected with the national initiative can do so and what are best ways to do that. In addition to the PCOC, and I just am really thankful you took the time to be here and talk about your role, but I know there are many other work groups and boards and commissions in the city that probably would appreciate the opportunity to connect. Just some that come to mind are Civil Rights Commission. We do have a transgender issues work group in the city. I could go on, but I think there are many opportunities and to use some of those residents for, again, helping bring forward suggestions or connecting you more directly to members of the community that I think would be valuable to, to meet with who aren't maybe coming to mind, because today they aren't on boards and commissions or on other roles where we see that, but yet they are leaders and want to be involved. So with that, anything else you wanted to add?
Just adding, I couldn't have said it better. That's exactly it. As we meet with community members, we ask them, who else should we meet with? And that, that's a process. This is an iterative process. We'll continue to meet with individuals and groups as we move forward. That is the whole point of this. So I appreciate that comment.
Okay. Any last words, chief? That's it. Thank you. Okay. All right. Well, thank you again very much for the presentation. Thank you to all the community members who took their time to be here, to the mayor who joined us for this meeting. I'm going to move to-